This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're being recorded. Work sessions are opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. And we'll go ahead and start with board communications. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would say that this board packet that we received was a nerd's delight in terms of providing learning opportunities and a wealth of detail on things that I hadn't even considered. And so I appreciate always the chance to explore with my colleagues, the opportunity to bring out the highest and best use for each other and everybody in the county and the county resources, including the property at the North Coast Business Park. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I mean, what's not fun about a 200-page packet? I mean, please. There you go. Commissioner Bangs. Not working. All right, Commissioner Bangs.
Actually, I just got it to work. I'm sorry. I'm having technological issues here amongst many. Basically, the last couple of days, I have been trying to help my community or assist my community in our Verizon issues that we have had. I had a heavy assist from Legislative Representative Suzanne Weber on trying to, I guess, prod, cattle prod the process along for us. It's still not resolved. Sadly, our community has been in and out of service for the last three weeks in regards to Verizon, and it still hasn't been resolved. And so it's kind of putting a hitch in my, my work efforts, but also some concerns in our emergency services forum. So anyhow, that's, that's been the last four days, five days that I've, I've been trying to kind of cattle prod a process along so that we can have a resolution and, and have quality service in my area. So.
Yeah, frustrating. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bangs, for the update. Good luck. Hopefully, that can be reestablished. Commissioner Toyoka.
Good morning, everyone. Just greetings from the brand-new derivative of Lums Auto Center in Warranton to Walla Walla Toyota, a new Lums. We're just setting it up, and we've opened up officially on Monday. So this has been a fun process. Board communication-wise, I could defer to our North Coast Business Park section of our meeting. That was pretty much more of my, my briefing or my input for the communication. So I'll defer until then because we're going to cover it thoroughly at that point, I'm sure.
Great. Well, thank you, Commissioner Toyoka, and congratulations. That's exciting.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb.
Nothing much to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. I don't have anything to report as well, so we'll go right into our legislative update with Philip.
Good morning, commissioners. We don't have a huge amount to report from our last one. Since Friday, we had the second chamber of deadline, which it has been eerily quiet over the weekend. I was just joking with my boss that I think in our inboxes, we had 15 emails over the last, this weekend, which is not normal during session. So I think everyone kind of took a break after that. We're starting to see agendas reposted. In fact, there's been 26 agendas posted with bills as of this morning. We're going through there and putting digits, if anything, for a class of counties on there. The one thing that I do see is that later this week, the district attorney's budget and their deputies, district attorneys and their deputies' budget will be up for a work session in the subcommittee. They are keeping that, funding that just above current service level with the same FTE, so no cuts in positions. They do have two budget notes attached to that, and I just wanted to flag one of them, which would be asking the district attorneys in, in association with AOC and other entities to bring back in 2022 a report sharing how each county is helping fund their district attorneys and spelling that out. I think their goal there is they're trying to take one entity at a time of really figuring out what funds are coming into it. They're trying to become less dependent upon general fund, as you folks can imagine. And so I think this is, it's just, it's up, this, this budget's up for that, that conversation. So they are to report that back in 2022. No real set date for that, but I imagine that would be in time for the short session because they do anticipate doing a budget rebalance in early May of next year as that second round of federal dollars lands. So that is the big budget that would be moving, that I would think of concerns for you. There are about nine other budgets, but smaller, like the Cemetery and Mortuary Board, those type of budgets are moving out this week as well. So you should start seeing the full ways and means having regular meetings weekly. So other than that, we are waiting for that next round of bills and announcements to come right after this last second chamber deadline. So that is where we are at this, this far this week.
Great. Thank you, Philip. Any questions? Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Philip, I attend the AOC Public Safety Committee. Rob Ovette iterates and reiterates about how the cost for public safety is increasingly shifted to the counties. I'm glad that, that what you described is happening, and I urge you to keep us fully informed so that we can prepare necessary data and, and really ask for the support of the state for the, for all of those public safety functions.
Not a problem, Commissioner. I am emailing Monica that, the full language of that budget note right now. So.
Any other questions? Not seeing any. Thank you very much, Philip. Appreciate the update.
Not a problem. Thank you, commissioners. Talk to you soon.
Yes, have a good day. Before we move on to the county health update, I just did, I just did receive kind of a phishing email or a spam email. I don't know if any of the other commissioners would be receiving it, but it's okay, from county staff there. So beware.
If I could just remind everybody, because we did get an email from staff today, it, it says it's from county staff, but if you check the email, that is not a county email. So.
Right.
So don't ignore us altogether, but just make sure that it's a really a county email address.
Make sure it's a county email. Exactly. Thank you, Monica. And then we'll move on to our county health department update and our director, Margot Lolich.
Good morning, everyone. So quick update, and also I'm not sure if the chat is, it's disabled right now because I can post the link. I mentioned last week that OHA was launching two new dashboards in response to the changes in guidance and decisions by the state, policy decisions. And so that dashboard is now live, which shows the progression of counties in relationship to the 65 and 75% threshold as well as vaccination rates. So I will post that in the chat, or I can send that out to staff to be shared with all of you. And out of all of the counties, lots of counties 11th right now. And we are, let me see here. And it's for 16 plus. So we were at 60% with the 18 plus, which we were looking at last week, or 56.8% towards that 65% threshold now that we're counting the 16 plus because we just started vaccinating that population. Based upon our numbers, we're about 2,700 people away from that 65% threshold. We had our first pediatric clinic last Saturday at the fairgrounds. It went very well. We were expecting it to maybe just have a few more glitches, just as our first clinic, but it actually flowed very smoothly. Really no issues at all. Parents did great, students did great, and, and clinics are still filling up. Our second dose Tuesday, Thursday clinics, people are showing up for those second doses, which is fantastic. And we are in the process of scheduling our clinics into June. Tomorrow, I have a vaccine event coordinator starting. This is a temporary casual position to really do that more targeted mobile outreach over the next couple of months. So looking forward to that and looking forward to partnering with our CBOs. We have three CBOs who are in contract with OHA to support vaccine event outreach. That's Astoria Warming Center, Consuelo Hispano, and CCA, all of who are supporting our current events. But again, they will liaison to other populations out in the community. So that's going well. And we are also hosting our first Pfizer vaccination clinic here at the Health Department. Tomorrow, it's from 11 to 1. I think that will be a standing clinic for us going forward because people can flex their lunch hours during that time. We are giving Pfizer, because we have 30 doses of Pfizer that will expire tomorrow at 4:00 PM. So we want to get those administered, and we didn't even do a wide release on that. We personalized email to different entities, including the county infrastructure, and that clinic is almost filled, so that will become part of routine operations as well. And then I think that's it. We're just continuing with all of our other public health activities as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Bangs has a question.
Yes, I, just a quick question in regards to our pediatric clinics. Are we requiring parental permission even for kiddos above the age of 15?
No, because it's not required in the state of Oregon, and OHA has made it very, very clear, even through the Department of Justice and their consults, that minor consent in Oregon applies to the COVID vaccine. And in fact, if they're younger than 15, they can still show up, even if they don't have a parent or guardian with them, as long as that consent is signed and there's an emergency contact on that consent form. So we, you know, we're having a few sign up, but most have a family member or a guardian or parent with them.
I guess my only concern is being that having suffered the, the, the following days of the COVID vaccine, it, and, and it just seems like we would want our parents to be informed. But I totally understand. I totally get the position that we are at. So, thank you.
Yeah, not, you know, Oregon's been wrestling with this in terms of access to medical care for this population for a long time. It's very, I think, progressive and also seasoned at this. And the unfortunate reality is that under other circumstances, there is a percentage of this population age group that don't have stable families, that are, that are homeless and manage, unfortunately. Many circumstances are on their own, but there is a safety, you know, there's a safety net for them. And, and many of those are very familiar with public health and the support that we provide as well, linking them to other supports in the community. So I believe we're doing our diligence.
Is there a way for us to do some sort of pediatric follow-up with those children to make sure that they're doing okay? I, I, I'm just thinking as a parent right now, not as a commissioner per se as much, but is there a way for us to, after this process, just to make sure that they have the resources that they need? If they're potentially having like a couple of days of a consequence of, of, you know, fever or whatever.
You know, we don't have a protocol in place for that because when they come in, you know, it's nurses and physicians who are vaccinating. And so we're having, you know, we spend a lot of time having conversation with them and really assessing what their support system is. And also what to do and what they may experience. So because it's definitely a diverse group without question. And then also what to do if they do experience symptoms that are of concern, you know. Definitely, there's those who are coming in who have anxiety, right, and we're addressing that. And, but yeah, we, and based at least on our first clinic, because things would definitely circle back to us. We haven't received any communication from a community member who has a neighbor, or, you know, we get all kinds of emails that would raise a red flag for me at this point in time. But yeah, yeah. So I appreciate that concern, and I'll just keep that on my radar as we go into clinic on Saturday.
Yeah, I just, some sort of pediatric touchstone, maybe even just a phone number or an email address that's full, you know, dedicated to these kids that, you know, this group that may not have parental. Okay, okay, good.
All that information is definitely provided. And, you know, it's great because we have physicians who are also vaccinating. And so, you know, they know some of the families well and the kids well, and, you know, everyone's waving to whether they're really excited to see each other. So it's, it's a good support system.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I will tell you, there's always anecdotal stories, and I think this is it, is that there was a couple who were probably actually maybe 19 years old. They walked an hour to get to the clinic. Their whole family was vaccinated, their whole family had been vaccinated. And they really wanted to get vaccinated, and they believed in it, and they weren't, for some reason, aware of the transportation support. So they walked, actually, it was a little over an hour just to get vaccinated, all the way to the fairgrounds from Astoria. They came in and, you know, they, of course, got vaccinated, and then we were like, you know, doing what we do with youth, and it's just like, hey, we have some extra lunches and food. Are you guys hungry? So then we fed them. And then again, since the Empire Transportation District is looping their bus, so we made sure to get them on a bus and get them transportation back to where they came from. But it was like, you know, they felt like, I want to be vaccinated, and it's a responsibility to myself, my community, my family. So there are many stories like that, or people are deeply committed to this, to this, this campaign.
Any other questions? Margot, I just had a question about where we're at with the risk levels. I see that it's a, a warning week, not a movement week.
Right.
And we will still have this kind of, go ahead.
Yeah, we're going to drop back down to, I think, medium or even low risk when we go into the next movement week. So that's very encouraging. As I watch the cases, I mean, we're having days now where we're not having any positives show up. And, but we just opened two new outbreaks, right, because it's two or more cases. And where we are seeing the outbreaks are in schools, which is relatively low risk, but, you know, it takes one to have an outbreak in school, or employment-related outbreaks. So, and I expect that to taper off. And it'll be interesting. I, I'm kind of expecting to see a spike with the change in the masking. And then where we will really, things will really flatten out. I'm pleasantly surprised to see how many people are still wearing their masks. It's like the norm now. And even in Cannon Beach where I live, right, they're wearing their mask. Businesses are still wanting them to wear masks, and I think it's going to take, I think this is the new norm, at least for a while.
So if I'm correct, then if you're going to continue with the trend through next week, it would be 28 that we would move into a new risk category?
Yes, yes. Yep, absolutely.
Commissioner Bangs.
Just to be clear, you said only one instance in a school district would be considered an outbreak, not more than one?
One case in a school is, is designated as an outbreak. And part, the reason for that is because of the level of contact and also the fact that it can spread so easily in a school setting and be so disruptive that it's just, it's, it's, it's just raising the bar. And so throughout the pandemic, one in a school has been considered an outbreak, as well as like one in a congregate living setting, like assisted living facility or a long-term care facility.
All right. Not seeing any more questions. Thank you very much, Margot, for that thorough update, and that's good news. We'll move on to next item on the agenda is the development of land use planning, work plan, process, and schedule. We have 10 minutes set aside for this, and Gail Hendrickson, we'll turn it over to you.
Hi. Good morning, commissioners. Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. The work plan for the Planning Division is a new process that we're instituting this year. And it's designed to track the board's strategic planning process and then to tie into our budgeting process as we prepare those items every year. And the reason we wanted to have a work plan is to make sure that we are incorporating any strategic plan action items that the board identifies as you go through your planning process, and to make sure that the items that we need to do from a regulatory standpoint to make sure we meet state statute and to identify areas where we can increase operational efficiencies. So we wanted to put together a comprehensive plan. And we, we brought this planning document to the board back in March for an initial review and got your feedback on that. And we took it to the Planning Commission in April at their regular meeting. And the Planning Commission didn't have any suggested revisions to the work plan itself. They had some comments about process and questions about how things will look moving forward, but no changes to the actual work itself. So we're bringing it back to the board one more time for one more review. And then if you have any revisions or you don't, we would either incorporate those, but our goal is to bring this back to you on June 9th then for formal approval. And I'm really here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I really appreciate the good work of staff in responding to the board's questions and concerns, and I think communication is always an ongoing process. We've had a lot of changes in commissioners, changes in the county manager. Since I was a planning commissioner, I've dealt with, with five or six county managers and a like number of planning directors. There really has been a churn. There's been a churn at the commissioner level as well. And all of those changes in personnel make communication much more challenging. So this document's a very important piece of it, and I'm glad to see it here. One thing I'm not clear on is how do I, as an individual commissioner, most productively relate to the work of your department? In, in whatever public outreach occurs, in whatever revision of ordinance occur, I want to be able to have a most constructive relationship. So it's hard to see that in the document precisely. Perhaps this isn't the time or place for it, but I'd like us as a board of county commissioners to continue to confer with you and the county manager on how we can go forward most smoothly and productively.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I think if I understand what you're saying, you're, are you looking for, can, I guess, feedback and updates about where we are in the plan so that you have information to communicate to your constituents and then be able to give us input back about how we're progressing through the plan? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
Thank you. That's a good, big piece of it. Because that's, I want to say, a parallel process, but there's also the matter of direct participation by commissioners. For example, when I went to my local citizen advisory committee, I was considered a member of the public, which strikes me as a bit odd, being a county commissioner, because I would think I would be something like an ad hoc member or something like that. We just haven't clarified the roles and responsibilities and the productive way to go through, because I'll hear as a planning commissioner, but at heart, I am always a neighbor. And so there's lots of communication I get in lots of meetings and have for, for decades. So, so how to enrich the process and still make it smooth? But I think we're on the right track. I think certainly more periodic feedback to the whole commission on what you see going on, but also into integration of commissioners in your activities to enrich it and, and get us to the best result. I think, I think that's where I'm headed, and I'm sorry, I'm not more clear about it. We're inventing this as we go along, which is always more challenging. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bangs.
Um, I guess I, not so much a question as a comment. I, I would, I don't know, I'm looking at the amount of FTE that's being dedicated to certain portions of the strategic plan, and infrastructure seems to be a pretty important topic to me, and I know to many of us regarding, you know, most of our issues all kind of stem from, from infrastructure or lack thereof. And so I was just wondering why we don't have more FTE dedicated to infrastructure? I know that we are very limited on staff time and, and staff, you know, availability. And I just wonder if we could possibly reallocate these numbers a little bit to give a little bit more to infrastructure.
And this is all in the Development Director's budget, so that might be the reason for it reflecting on a point.
And no, actually, actually, the reason for that is when the board put together the strategic, strategic plan, a lot of the infrastructure items are being handled by either departments or agencies that are outside of the Community Development Department. So we actually, in some of your strategic plan items, have no role or a very limited role because there are other organizations or other departments that are taking the lead on that. And so if you were to see a work plan from those agencies or departments, you would see those FTE reflected there. So.
Okay. Thank you, Gail, for that, for that description. That makes a lot more sense.
County Manager.
Chair Quayle, members of the board, I just want to reiterate what, what Gail was saying is that in the strategic plan document for those infrastructure items, they have been assigned to staff, but they are outside of the Community Development Department. Right now, many of them are, are residing in the county manager's office. And so there's a lot of FTE that's being devoted to those as we go through kind of the phasing process and the initial planning process. And so as we move forward, we'll have more discerning conversations with your board about how those resources will be allocated. But as, as Gail reiterated, is that we hope to share some of these responsibilities with some of our key partners. And so as we develop those, we'll come back to your board. But everything that was in the strategic plan, as those tier ones, has been resourced and is being addressed. So.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Webb had her hand up. Commissioner Webb.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I was really delighted to see this, this final version. I'd love to have a, a work plan like this for virtually every department. It was, as always from our planning staff, very complete and very well-directed at, at, to have, to have almost every department focused on our strategic plan is, is pretty wonderful. And it was really nice to see, to see that here. I, I still worry about how much a .05 FTE can really get done. But, but, but I do, I, I think it's just marvelous, and I think that the process that promises to go on is, is really wonderful. And I would love to see this kind of strategic thinking applied to some of our other departments because it gives us a much longer-term view of, of what we're working toward. And I guess the only thing, I feel like, I think I had a couple of questions. One of them is about. One of them is about the comp plan. I didn't see a specific reference. Did I miss something? Did I, am I not understanding something?
Yeah, so the very first task on our work plan is a comprehensive plan update.
Right.
And we removed the schedule at this point because we will be coming back to the Board on June 15th for a work session to talk about the updated process and scheduling for that. So I didn't include the schedule this go around.
Okay, it just looked a little thin there. The other question I have relates to, when you talked about required resources, you sometimes put a dollar amount. I'm assuming that's a consultant? Am I right in that?
Yeah, it could be consultants, and that's primarily what it is, but those are also the special project requests that we have included in the fiscal year 21, 22 budget, and then are planning for, in some cases, for 22, 23 fiscal year. So, and so it was something above and beyond our standard budget.
Good, good. So these basically can be turned into budget requests, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Great job, as always.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Toyoki, you had your hand up there, too.
I did, thank you very much. More of a question for Gail than anything is, in the document, you know, you read about all of the staff contributions, you know, item by item, task by task on the work plan. Is this the document where you would put, like, our Partner's Planning Commission's expectation contribution, so it would marry up, or does that stay within their own charter documents, or how do we mesh?
Well, it's going to bleed over into my item later on, but I think that's a very good suggestion.
Different, you know, Partners.
Yeah, one thing we will be talking about when we get to our Planning Commission item is putting together a statement about the roles and responsibilities, and making sure that everyone is clear about what conduct is expected of them, and also, you know, more clearly defining what we expect them to be reviewing and handling, and who's responsible for what. I think including that in the work plan is a good suggestion, and we can certainly incorporate that before we bring it back to you on June 9th.
Good suggestion, I think we lost John there. Any other questions, discussion? It certainly gives a perspective on how many things that the Community Development Director in that Department is doing, just to see this all laid out like this. I noticed that four FTEs are devoted just to, I'm just looking down to it, four FTEs just to legislated mandates, so just, I guess that's just permitting and all of the requirements that go with processing of things that come into the Planning Department. Yeah, lots of work there, thank you very much. We'll go and move on to the Jail Citizens Advisory Committee update. Turn it over to Sheriff Phillips.
Good morning, Commissioner, Sheriff Phillips here. I spoke to Mr. Jerry Ostermiller this morning, and fortunately, he is not available. So you'll have to settle for myself with the support of Monica today, but I think we'll do a good job. On April 15th, we met with the members of the Citizen Advisory Committee, and we debriefed them on all the work that's happened in basically the last year. So a little bit of history is that, I think it was May 14th of 2020, we received the bids, or the first set of bids for this project, and they came in approximately $5 million over budget. And that was a real shock to our system, especially because our estimates had showed that we were on track for the full build-out that I think you've probably seen in flyers before. And so that was quite depressing, and the team went to work looking at ways to save money. And they sent things out for rebid and clarification, and there was not a meaningful savings. And so DLR, our architect, Amerit Construction, and Cornerstone, they all went to work, and they, I think in a panic, went through a process of only focusing on cutting scope of the project. Certainly, cutting housing areas saved money, but they were also, in desperation to get us on budget, they were cutting things from the program that were necessary, such as replacing leaky roofs, or fixing walls and windows that had leaked. And I reached a point where I did not believe that the folks that we had hired to look out for us were still doing that. So I met with Dawn, I expressed my concerns, and Dawn and I set up an intervention. And I told them to stop all work, all three companies, and that we were going to have a meeting. And I think that they knew that Dawn and I meant business, because they came to the meeting prepared with a plan. For example, Amerit Construction decided that they would give back $250,000 of their fee to the project to get us closer to budget. Cornerstone and DLR also made concessions to get us back on project. And we gave them a month to make a plan to make this jail a success. After, as we neared a month, they weren't quite ready, so I asked them for updates, and they, each of those companies gave us written updates of what they were going to do, and then the following month, they came to us with a plan that you see in front of us. That didn't mean we were going to fix leaky roofs and walls with water intrusion problems. Basically, what they did is they kind of reimagined how to do the most expensive parts of this jail build. And one of the biggest savings was, instead of buying pre-cast tilt panels for the walls that would be trucked in, they would cast them on-site using the foundations and the floors of the buildings that were demolished as the casting beds. That's less expensive for a couple reasons. We certainly save on the trucking, and kind of an odd thing is, you can cast a much larger panel, so there will be less of them to stand up, and there's a sealant that you put between the joints of the cast panels that is absurdly expensive. And we use a lot less of that, having larger walls that also actually line up with the cells that you install inside the facility. So Monica's put up a copy of the floor plan, is it possible to blow that up a little bit? So what was great about this plan is we have maintained a first-class medical suite within the facility, and we preserved programming spaces as promised. They're a little bit small, but in the, there's one of the program spaces, and there's another one. And we are going to have seven classifications. And with that, we also maintained an intake housing area up front there, and that's two classifications. So far, progress has been great on the jail. I'm listening to a pile driver right now, pretty soon they'll be wrapping up the driving of the steel piles. There has been some cost escalation with the price of steel and lumber. Fortunately, there's not a lot of lumber, there is a lot of steel. The team has been very diligent to pre-purchase things early, and store whatever they can on-site to combat that price escalation. And so far, you know, we started with $785,000 in contingency, and so far, we're preserving that number pretty well. So at this point, things are very positive. We did go through a time of stress and dismay, but our team, once we got them refocused, has been on-point and doing very well.
That's great.
Yeah, any questions about where we're at?
Any questions with the Sheriff? Commissioner Webb?
Did I understand correctly then that the Citizen Advisory Committee has actually only met once?
They met several times prior to bid, and we wanted to have many more meetings, but there was this whole, whole long period of time where we were treading water, and we didn't have an update, and we didn't really want to say, you know, there's an issue at the moment with the budget until we had a path to resolve it. And once we shared that with them, they were very pleased with what we had accomplished and getting this back on target.
Good. What, I'm a little confused about what their role is intended to be in this process. Can you help me out with that?
I think that the members of the committee, they have, you know, personal interest in the success of this facility, and they're also good about sharing, you know, what we're doing well with the community, and being supportive and informed about what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not seeing any, so thank you very much, Sheriff. Thanks for giving an update on the progress. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. We have 30 minutes that we have assigned for the North Coast Business Park land development feasibility on page 43 of the packet.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is an update, and what you have in your packet is the report that McKinsey has provided. And I'm going to go through this presentation of some slides that have a lot of that information in it, as well as a little bit of additional information in regards to how that might tie to other projects or from an economic benefit standpoint. And so I hope to get through all of these slides, and then we have representatives from McKinsey as well as ELS, the Wetland Consultant, as well as our contracted Realtor, Brad Carnese, to answer questions once we get through this presentation. So to get started, this project started back in December of 2020 when we contracted with McKinsey to identify existing infrastructure, transportation, environmental, and development code opportunities, and any limitations for the development of the four tax lots that the county still owns out at the North Coast Business Park. And these four tax lots approximate 140 acres in size, and you can see them in the yellow areas here. There's a large one, two slightly smaller ones, and then over here, there's about 10.8 acres as well. So the project context was to determine the net developable acreage, given the current site conditions and constraints. To summarize, preliminary observations regarding the existing utilities, transportation, and zoning as they pertain to an industrial development potential, and then assumptions for the project that any future or potential development will be for new industrial buildings with associated surface parking, dock doors, trailers, stormwater, et cetera. And then McKinsey's report to review the standards applicable to such potential development. So as you're all aware, this site is located within the city of Warrenton's jurisdiction. As I mentioned before, there are four tax lots. You could potentially create three. The two that are in the center could be considered a single lot. They're bound primarily by public streets. It comprises approximately 141.69 acres that range in size from 10.88 acres, which was that smallest one on the south, to approximately 62.04 acres. It's zoned as I-1, which is general industrial, and is designated urban development in the city of Warrenton Comprehensive Plan, and it's not located with any overlay or flood plain zones. So some of the existing conditions, this slide here, this photo goes back to June of 1977. And so in the 60s, a portion of this North Coast Business Park were cleared and graded for the construction of a proposed aluminum plant, and that never came to fruition. And the majority of the park remains undeveloped, and the remaining lots are nearly all covered in trees, wetlands, shrubs, with no impervious areas outside of the abutting public street. There is a Pacific Power and Light Distribution Substation that is adjacent to the northern portion of the site, and there is a PPL easement that runs east through the site and then south across Southeast 19th Street, and that is that black line that is shown here. So this property has access mainly, so these are the four lots, again, there's number 211, 212, 213, and then down here in the south corner, 214. And so 214, which is this southern one, is mostly accessible via Southeast 19th Street, which runs along here. The northern three lots, number 211, 212, and 213, all have access via Southeast 19th Street as well as Enzen. And the northern edge of tax lot, number 211, there is, sorry, I apologize, and then number 211 and 213 both have access over here off of Highway 101 Business. And then this northern, it doesn't show it because I couldn't fit it all, so you can still see the image, but number 211 is bound by right-of-way, however, that street is not developed, and it is not expected to provide access for future development. There is also Southeast Jedy Avenue, which is up by the same 211 lot, that is a local street which extends to the north edge of 211. The site has direct frontage on Southeast 19th Street, which is under the city of Warrenton's jurisdiction, and they require that property frontage measuring 51 to 100 feet, that is, that it has a commercial driveway and must be a minimum of 20 feet wide to a maximum of 30 feet wide, and there are currently no existing driveways on any of these properties. Southeast Enzen and Highway 101 Business, so along here in Highway 101 Business, are ODOT's jurisdiction, and ODOT will limit access to these streets, and since access is available to Southeast 19th Street, while some access to ODOT roads may be allowed, it would likely be limited to right-in and right-out access only, so that means no crossing the highway or the road. So these are Warrenton development codes, and so some of the applicable industrial use that is allowed for these lots would include production, processing, assembling, packing, or treatment of products such as food products, pharmaceutical hardware, as well as the production of these similar types of things for previously-prepared or semi-finished materials. It can be used for research and development laboratories, printing facilities, storage and distribution, vehicle repair, mini warehouse storage, contractor shop or equipment storage, cabinet, carpenter, woodworking, sheet metal shops. Could also be used for professional financial or business offices, as well as recreational marijuana production, processing, or wholesale activities. And then this table to the right just kind of talks about their development standards as far as minimum and maximum lot sizes and dimensions and such. So this here is land use limitations and restrictions, and so there's, you know, heavy fabrication of finished or semi-finished products from raw materials are allowed, but it's only through a conditional use permit. The industrial development, which within two calendar years will use two or more acres of land, or will have a building with more than 10,000 square feet, is considered a large-scale development, and so that would trigger type 3 design review. Smaller developments would require a type 2 design review. The city would require wetland delineations that are approved by DSL for applications for subdivisions, partitions, land unit development, and so on, as well as for grading or building permit. The city also requires the delineation of wetland boundary as approved by DSL. Uh, the city also requires the delineation of wetland wetland boundary as approved by DSL and proposed development plans showing that the wetland boundary and proposed setbacks for land use applications um that alter the land within twenty-five feet of a map area. Um, but don't propose impacts to map wetlands um or within twenty-five feet of them. So um a lot of this, if impacts are proposed to a wetland as a result of grading or building permit, the city would also require that the state of Oregon Wetland Removal Fill Authorization take place and that um written verification from the Community Development Director for the city of Warrenton or their designee um that the wetland is classified as non-significant. If it's classified as significant, then there may be a hardship variance that would be required. So um a lot of um preliminary work that would need to take place. Um, in regards to the public infrastructure findings, um, so the McKinsey team used uh available public documents to review to find these existing conditions from um the maps for public water sewer and storm drainage system um that currently serve the North Coast Business Park. They identified structure upgrades or extensions that would be needed in order to accommodate development based on the available infrastructure and known deficiencies, regulatory requirements and planned improvements. And then there was a utility analysis um that relied on past work that was documented and generally reflects utility pipe alignments and sizes presented in past past plan. Um, utility upgrades that are listed um required to extend or improve service to each site as well as any extensions that are expected that the jurisdiction would require to be installed um with any development elsewhere. So from a public uh infrastructure finding for water sewer and storm drainage, um, the cost estimates have been developed, but only at a planning level. The costs for water sewer and storm drainage upgrades are based on linear feet of pipe through a development area and are meant to reflect construction of various parts of the overall conveyance system. And then the right of way dedications for onsite and frontage improvements are assumed to be part of the cost of the land and are not included in any of these estimates. The um utility considerations for water, um, this would be including an extension of a twelve inch water main in Southeast Nineteenth Street and the new Southeast Jetty Avenue and an extension of an eighteen inch water main within Inson. And these extensions would establish a loop system connecting the existing water system. In the two thousand eighteen Warrenton Master Plan, it didn't it indicated that the city's water rights will reach their capacity at building out in the plan year of twenty thirty-seven. And so the infrastructure, while relatively robust and adequately sized to deliver water flows, um, the limitation is on available water rights and therefore any high water demand users may overwhelm the city's ability to provide water to the North Coast Business Park. So sewer considerations, um, the city staff reported that the sanitary sanitary sewer system um had many known maintenance and capacity issues which would need to be addressed for industrial buildout. Some of those um considerations include um the pump station wet well is deteriorated and needs replacement. The downtown pump station is currently operating above capacity and causing surcharge during heavy rainfall events. The pump station at Skipponon River Bridge may need to be relocated due to a planned bridge replacement. And the wastewater treatment plant is near capacity after upgrades were last completed in two thousand six. And so the sanitary service, as um you're all aware, is provided by the city. And it's um a network of gravity mains which drain to a pump station that I just spoke of um on Southeast Nineteenth Street. And that pump station has a capacity of nine hundred and fifty gallons per minute and it discharges through a twelve inch force main to the downtown sewage collection basin basin. And so these downstream improvements are noted as potential constraints for serving the full buildout. Um, in the estimates for the North Coast Business Park development, which we'll get to, um, these costs were not included since they would be attributed to the city's overall wastewater collection and the treatment system um and is not solely for the North Coast Business Park. Um, infrastructure upgrades needed to serve development include the extension of the gravity mains to the developable areas. Uh, the storm drainage, the city of Warrenton does not currently require stormwater quality treatment for new development. Uh, detention is expected to be required for new developments due to reported flooding in the Skipponon River Drainage Basin. And then state and federal regulations may require detention and water quality treatment due to expected wetland impacts on the site. Uh, the storm drainage in this area is generally provided through roadside ditches and surface channels. And the northern leg of Southeast Nineteenth Street uh generally defines a watershed boundary and it bisects the site. Portions to the south of the site of Southeast Nineteenth, those drain into um the southwest area by Highway one oh one uh with eventual discharge into the Skipponon River. And then portions to the north drain um with eventual discharge also um into the Skipponon Slough, which then drains to the Skipponon River. And areas east of Highway one oh one drain to the Adair Slough, which eventually discharges to the Columbia River. And there's um expected improvements include uh for this development roadside ditches, culvert and new detention ponds to serve the new right of way road. So the transportation, um, this addresses the site for the major street access and frontage improvement. Some potential offsite mitigation was identified regarding existing and planned transportation system and likely improvements to just to support development of the site. And um it was not done, but a comprehensive traffic impact analysis would likely be needed at the time of site design review to fully assess what the potential impacts to the surrounding transportation infrastructure would be. So these are um the transportation considerations. Um, and as you're all aware, uh, we've been keeping you informed as well as what's in the um in the report that McKinsey provided, but there's two options of development. And really, from a transportation perspective, um, the only major difference is approximately two hundred and two hundred square, or sorry, two hundred linear feet um of frontage. So in option one, um, which is this option here, um, you would be improving Southeast Nineteenth Street from the existing two lane section to a major collector standard. And that means that it would have to include new bicycle lanes and sidewalks along both sides of the street. And in option one, that would be for approximately twenty-six hundred um linear feet of frontage ending approximately right here. Um, and then on the option two, it extends it another two hundred linear feet um down a little bit further, uh, night, a little further east on Nineteenth Street. Um, in both uh in both options, it would extend approximately nine hundred and seventy feet, uh, linear feet um along Southeast Jetty as a two lane local street. And this would include bicycle lanes, sidewalks, landscapes and lighting with a sixty foot right of way. Um, off in offsite intersection improvements are likely required at Marlin Road and as well as Highway one oh one to accommodate vehicle trips resulting from the industrial um buildout. Uh, specific timing and scope of improvements are not known, but would be evaluated uh as the project develops. And then um uh planned improvements for all of this is based on the city of Warrenton's uh T S B plan and discussion with city staff is how um McKinsey came to get this information. So development constraints, um, the wetland delineation report that was completed by ELS in December of twenty twenty found that there's nearly eighty acres of wetlands at the Business Park. And these wetlands have an additional fifty foot protection buffer that is required by D E Q, which adds an additional forty acres of undevelopable land to the site. And so the current uh L L W I uh wetland um does not identify any significant wetlands at the North Coast Business Park um in either of the development options that are being proposed by McKinsey. Um, the city will confirm whether any wetlands are deemed significant through their local wetland laboratory or if they're uh if they're insignificant. Um, if the L W I is updated by the city through a legislative process, this could change. If a significant wetland is proposed to be filled, the permitting process becomes slightly more difficult. Um, there is currently no wetland mitigation bank that serves this watershed and that's why we're proposing all um the mitigation be done on onsite. And then ORWAP has onsite ratios um that vary greatly, ranging from a five, five and a half to one or twenty-five and a half to one, depending on the type of wetland that's being impacted. Um, D D S L recently impla- sorry, implemented this ORWAP or Oregon Rapid Wetland Assessment Protocol um to determine wetland functionality. And it's based on seventeen different wetland app attributes. And so that's what um when we came before the board to have further wetland analysis done, um, it was diving a little bit deeper into all of these seventeen different wetland attributes. Um, based on all of this development constraints associated with the wetlands um and the 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 significant amount of wetlands that are located on lot two fourteen, which is that's the southern lot that's approximately ten point eight eight acres um and the location of all the wetlands on that, um, industrial development of that particular lot um was not realistic. So as we move forward in the development option, that site is left off. Um, so that that site is no longer part of this process. Uh, so the development options, um, this is development option number one. And this here, all of this red red area is wetland fill. And then all of the green is proposed mitigation. And so in option one, what is being proposed is development of approximately thirty point six acres in kind of a single clumped area. And so from a conceptual design perspective, what that would look like is um these these buildings that are proposed here. So taking in all of the development constraints, one option that's being proposed is that you would develop a area of about thirty point six acres and then access to the site would be from Southeast Nineteenth Street. And all the wetland mitigation um for the proposed impacts would occur mostly in this southeast corner over here as well as north. And so in this particular um option, you have a single um building down in the lower south section that is on the corner of Southeast Nineteenth and Inson. And that proposed building is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. And then you have a larger um building in the uh northeast corner of approximately fifty thousand square feet as well as in the center area, two um buildings that are also approximately fifty thousand square feet. And then two smaller um buildings up in the north corner of Nineteenth Street of about thirty thousand square feet. So um one of the things to consider when going through this process is um what the economic benefits are. And then as you're all aware, one of the other things to consider is that we have been looking at the possibility of locating the public works facility here. And so from an economic benefits perspective, um, we valued these these buildings, the development of these buildings based on a hundred square foot um per hundred square, hundred dollars per square foot of building. And um this was based on information um from from our realtor on the market. And so this could range in a hundred dollars a square foot to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. So for the low end, we're providing you with um in this slide, a hundred dollars square foot. And so based on information from uh assessment and tax, you have approximately four hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet in um in developable buildings at in option one A, which would mean that the North Coast um Business Park was not chosen as a public works site. And so then the total real market value would be approximately forty-six point five million. And then um this table is a twenty-year tax projection by taxing district. So based on this hundred dollar square foot information and the taxing districts that would be impacted, um, you you're looking at in that first year of an additional potential of approximately four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in tax revenue. So for the city of Warrenton, in the first year, that would be approximately seventy thousand. For the county, that would be approximately forty-six thousand. Um, for the Warrenton School District, that would be approximately a hundred and ninety-three thousand. And over a period.
Is, can you tell me what page this is in our packet? Because I
This this part isn't in your packet and I apologize, but I will gladly send the presentation to you um afterwards. We were not able to get all of this um information compiled for your packet in time for it to get sent out to you in a timely manner. But I will send this to you separately.
Thank you, because this is the key. And I thought, boy, if I miss this one, I really missed something, but
Yeah, I will definitely send it to you all.
Good.
Um, and so then to option one B is if you were to locate the public works facility um on this site. And so in this particular um, in this particular development, uh, if the public works facility was to be located here, um, you you would only essentially be able to use that southern building that is approximately a hundred and seventy thousand square feet because of the rest of the area would need to be um used for the public works facility. So you're decreasing um the the square footage that you would be earning tax revenue on. And so the the difference there is um that approximately half. If you were to, i- i- if it came in at about um a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot of building, then your total um twenty-year cumulative um tax collection for option one A would be about fourteen million. And um for option uh two, or I'm sorry, uh, option one B, it would be approximately five point or six point one million. So option two breaks out the um developable land into three separate areas. So you still have that large um larger section down on the corner of Southeast Nineteenth and Inson. And then you have two smaller lots, one approximately nine acres and one approximately six acres um that are um north and south of Nineteenth Street. And so your potential site development, your your conceptual designs, you would have um the larger building um down again on that prime location of uh Nineteenth and Inson. You would have two smaller buildings on that um six acre lot that is just south of Nineteenth Street and then a larger building um uh on the northern part of Southeast Nineteenth Street. And so again, looking at the economic benefits here, this um this development is very similar to option one A. Um, your first year taxes that you would be collecting um would be just over four hundred thousand with a cumulative amount of approximately nine point six million based on that hundred dollar square foot. So another thing to take into consideration in regards to the economic benefits is job creation. And so what would the potential be for these um these uh buildings that are put out there? And this is information that McKinsey provided um in regards to job job density and assumptions that are made based on the building type. And so if you were to take the at the average thousand square foot of a building area for general manufacturing, flex office and warehouse space, you would essentially be taking one employee for every thousand square foot of the building. So um looking at the two options, um, option one A and option two, um, where you have a pro- just over four hundred thousand square feet of building space, then you would be creating approximately four hundred jobs um based on that general manufacturing type of development. If the development was fifty percent warehouse and fifty percent general manufacturing, then you would be looking at approximately four hundred and fifty jobs using these ratios. And then if it was um approximately forty-five percent warehouse, forty-five percent general manufacturing. And then if it was um approximately forty-five percent warehouse, forty-five percent general manufacturing and five percent office, then you'd be looking at approximately four hundred and sixty-five jobs. And so if you estimate the four hundred and sixty-five jobs, the median income in the county could be um a significant potential economic income tax opportunity um realized um by this, this development project. So in regards to the two options, whether you chose option one or option two and all of the development costs um for infrastructure that we discussed uh early on in this presentation. Um, they're really pretty similar, um, you know, approximately a hundred thousand dollar difference in the total cost between the two. Um, so estimated cost for option one total would be approximately six point two million. And you would be generating approximately four hundred and eleven thousand square feet of building space. And then option two, the total cost would be approximately six point one million and you're generating approximately four hundred and three thousand square feet of space. So the timelines, um, as we all are aware, especially when dealing with wetlands, um, it, it's not a quick start building anything tomorrow sort of thing. Um, you're looking at approximately um at least twenty-four months. And so the off-site improvements um were developed, assuming typical durations for design and permitting construction phases. Um, it's based on improvement length and complexity. Um, it could potentially be accelerated through increased coordination among involved design, permitting and construction parties. And then this is also just meant to represent normal industry schedules um without any pandemics or wildfires taking place. So next steps, uh, things for your board to consider is um the wetlands. The one thing that E L S, separate from Clatso County, um, it's a separate project that they are working on independently um is monitoring wetland mitigation banks. Um, they're doing, working on a study, it's currently underway to identify candidate sites in Clatso County. And so a bank in this spot watershed would allow wetland impacts at North Coast Business Park um that might be needed for industrial development to be mitigated offsite. So everything that has been presented to you is mitigating onsite. Um, in regards to the mitigation area, there is currently a deed restriction on the property. It may be possible to remove that or alter the mitigation area for future industrial development. Um, but if this is desired, this would require legal action and um would need to be explored for the process as well as costs associated with that. Uh, the infrastructure, this would require engagement and conversations with the city to perform additional studies in the area to evaluate the capacity and condition of the sewer systems and the cost upgrade as well as reviewing the availability of acquiring additional water rights to formalize agreements with large water users should there be um a developer that um would require something such as that. Um, in regards to the lot pattern, a lot line adjustment and or partition application uh could be required to create developable lots um that may allow quicker transactions of the development for a prospective buyer. Um, and then as far as work being done on that, those are internal discussions. If the county is willing to invest the resources to investigate um any of this preliminary partition plan and final partition plan uh to further develop those sites. And then grant opportunities, um, there is new legislation um from the state that has increased opportunities and awards for industrial site grant efforts. Um, in addition, there has been some planning for COVID nineteen uh pandemic economic recovery, which may also include additional grant opportunities. Um, this would be internal discussions whether Clatso County leadership and or staff are willing to invest resources to investigate these grant opportunities. Um, some of it can be time intensive uh for public infrastructure investments and whether the county would construct any public infrastructure improvements ourselves or prior to selling any or all portions of the business park. Um, if there is support for seeking grant opportunities, then it would be good to engage business organ, regional solution staff to discuss these opportunities. And we have already um done some of that engagement with Melanie and Jennifer. Um, just to discuss opportunities, timing restrictions and any additional new funding mechanisms that might be. And so some other items for consideration as you're taking all of this information in is um development options, um, marketing perspectives, uh, whether or not we just want to sell the land as is, um, whether we want to do some of these infrastructure developments um a- a- and, and advertise it um with, with those improvements, uh, whether or not we want to fight our public works facility here. Um, and then just the county's development in the county's investment in the development of it all. Um, is it something, you, you know, we have the uh industrial revolving fund available to us. Um, they do not meet the total infrastructure development that was um costs that were uh quoted earlier of that approximate six point one to six point two million. Um, but there are, you know, those opportunities to utilize some of those funds as well as to um work with the state um or other partners to see if there are grant opportunities. And so at this point in time, I'm gonna um end my slideshow and I'm gonna ask Teresa to take control back from me. Well, actually, I'll uh, I, I might just leave it, well, go ahead and take control back from me. Uh, so that way you can see um McKenzie as well as um Brad and um Stephanie with E L S. Or Brent, I'm sorry. Sorry, I have a Brad and a Brent, so Brad is our realtor and Brent is with McKenzie. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to all of you, uh, to Chair Quila and uh address any questions you all might have.
Thank you, Monica, very thorough report, appreciate the presentation very much. I see Commissioner Thompson has her hand up.
Thank you. Well, I said it was a nerd's delight and of course I want more. Um, we're a work in progress and I would say so far, so good. There were some slides that you mentioned that weren't included in our packet that I think are an essential part of our deliberation. So I'm eager to receive those so that the board can consider the benefits uh and not just the costs and um considerations for development. I think that's essential. Number two, the idea for a business park is to create conditions and um entities that generate revenue that help our tax base. So that's why we need to have those and look at those so we can do an informed, considered discussion of the eventual benefit to the county's tax base and what will give us the highest and best use for the most money and the best use of natural resources and develop natural talent that's here in the county. So then my next point is, gee, wouldn't this be a good place to have um a, a modular housing construction facility made of mass plywood panels? So I would like staff to consider my pet project, my eventual dream because by golly, I would sure like to see us be able to build more housing in Clatso County. And I think mass plywood panels creating modular housing would be a, a great idea. And if we could have it in this, in this location, um, I think possibility investigated, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I hadn't heard cross laminated timber plywood panels for a while, so I'm glad that you were able to insert that. Is any other questions? We've got Brett Nielsen from McKenzie, Brad, and we've got Stephanie from E L S. I, I guess I have a question just about the options, so option one versus option two. Which one of those two, because there are surrounding properties that might have development potential as well, even though they're not owned by the county. Um, which one of those two options might best promote development in surrounding areas?
Um, I, I don't know if somebody from McKenzie wants to jump in on it, but um, you know, you have but to the south of Enson is where C M H and um Big Bean or also known as Fort George both own property. So if you're extending things down southeast, or I'm apologize, down Enson, um, then you're gonna have, um, you're, you're gonna be helping in regards to in, infrastructure development there. And then going down Enson as well, there's, um, if you continue to head east uh out highway one oh one business, there is property um that has potential development um in the future uh for possibly residential um development out that way as well. So you're not extending it all the way, but you are continuing to extend it a little bit further along. And I'll let um McKenzie speak to that further.
Yeah, I, I can try answering some of that question and, and part of it is um just regards to what types of businesses or facilities you'd like to attract. Option one sort of consolidates the, the developable area into one larger lot, which tends to um be more attractive to, to users that want to, to have a consolidated facility or have larger buildings. Uh, option two spreads it out a little bit more, so it, you maybe you're attracting more businesses of a smaller footprint. So I think that's, that's kind of the, the main difference. Like Monica said, um, both options uh concentrate some of the development at the corner of, of Enson and nineteenth, which could be complementary to what's already there on the south side of Enson. Um, neither of them really uh propose moving further east along Enson just because of the, the site constraints that are there. But um, like I said, I think the, the difference, the main difference between the two is, is which facilities might be um more, or which site development might be more appropriate for a large footprint user.
Yeah, thank you, Brent. And I know Stephanie from E L S is on and I mean, I, I, I thought my soapbox about the wetlands and what's going on. I mean, this is one of the highest pieces of property in Warrenton. It was gonna be Allumax plant, uh, you know, several decades ago. It's been used for, you know, off-roading and motor biking for years. It's entire, and I think a lot of those wetlands uh were created because of just use and uh, and now we've got a hundred and forty acres and only thirty acres of it that is developable, which is just staggering to me that there would be this huge impact of, of wetlands in an area like that. I do wonder about the buffer areas. And, and I know that we've set back fifty feet from all of the wetlands. Is there, are, isn't there flexibility within the state uh rules? Because you, if you're not, if you're utilizing best management praxis, best management practices, can't you actually get closer to a wetland as long as you're providing some kind of buffer there of your own, artificial buffer?
Um, yes, the, the fifty-foot buffer is something relatively new, uh, around two thousand sixteen. And it's only from Department of Environmental Quality. Um, you can encroach into that fifty-foot area. Um, like you said, with best management practices, maybe some plantings. And, and it might just be best management practices. Um, the school district property to the south, um, they didn't, there's areas there where they're within fifty feet of the wetland and it, nobody argued about anything. Um, they did maintain some areas of buffer, but yes, it's generally um pretty flexible and it's not regulated by Department of State lands or the Corps. And I think it's mainly stormwater related.
And then, and then I guess like, uh, uh, going back to the stormwater, we talked about the flooding on the skip, in the Skipponon River Drainage Basin. What is that? Who, who has determined that there's flooding in the Skipponon River Drainage Basin? What is that based on?
Uh, that was based on reporting from, or just uh when, when we talked with the, the city and county staff, I think primarily city staff noted that uh the storm system on the downstream part of the Skipponon Basin uh has, has experienced flooding. Um, and some of that is due to just the topography of the site, you know, the area is fairly flat. Others is just due to the um, the, the amount of development that's contributed to, to more stormwater in the area.
Okay, so it was a city and county uh nation?
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I don't know that there's, you know, a, a record flood or anything that's um that was necessarily reported, but um just the conditions are, are there for uh if you add a lot of development out here without any detention, then you're gonna cause more problems downstream.
Sure. I did, I, I guess the other question about the ratios, you know, of course, there's a huge huge discrepancy between range, there are five acres to one to twenty-eight acres to one as far as impacts. Do we have any handle on what, what's more likely um in, in as far as mitigation often?
Um, yes, I think we have updated ratios. Um, and I, that should be included in one of the, your packet. But based on if we do onsite creation, um, the mitigation ratio will range from one to one to one point eight to one. So a lot smaller than five acres. Um, if you do other methods like enhancement or preservation, that might be where the higher uh ratios come in, but I don't think there's really the opportunity on the, to do onsite preservation or um enhancement that would be approved by the agencies.
Okay, thank you. So it is, it significantly reduced if you're do- what was the first option there you, you mentioned Stephanie, if you're doing the one to one or one point one?
It's uh ranges from one to one, if that's you're impacting just basically um herbaceous wetlands up to one point eight to one, which would be if you're impacting the evergreen forested wetlands.
Okay. Commissioner Banks.
Is there a way to do a table or a graph? Um, being able to visualize different levels of site preparation um that the county could do to increase marketability um versus like i- if in echelon, I guess, echelon one, county does this type of site preparation, it increases our marketability at this amount. Um, and the, in the profit margin that the county could make in conjunction to the site preparation. Is there a way to sometime, somehow do that so that we can um weigh the option of doing some site preparation in order to increase our marketability?
Staff could work with um Brad, our realtor, um, to, to kind of evaluate what those potential options would be um in regards to if you are going to invest in the infrastructure, then what would you then be asking in regards to a sale price to kind of offset that additional infrastructure investment? Um, we could work on developing something along those lines.
I mean, that, it would be nice to be able to see just because I know we've had this property for quite a while and nothing has, like, it, it, it's just kind of there. And so if we want to move forward with, with marketing it, potentially selling it, potentially developing it, um, it, I, there's a lot of, like, there's a lot of information in this work packet and in the slides that you gave us. And I know that I, I, I need to marinate on any further decisions, but to be able to see, um, that would be nice.
I get, can I, I'd like to ask Brad a question, and I guess he got your hand up anyway, so. Uh, I just a question about interest in the property, has there been some recent interest in the property?
Sure. Well, first of all, good morning, thank you for having me. Um, kudos to Monica, uh, Team McKenzie and the whole, the whole crew on this committee, if you will, fabulous job. Um, again, I was brought on to uh discuss disposing of the property. And at the end of the day, we said timeout, we need to learn as much as we can. This is a significant economic future benefit to the community and we don't have too many answers, we need to get all the facts, figures, et cetera. So we've taken some time and a couple steps backwards and probably a little bit more work to do. Uh, however, yes, we have put our sign on the corner of nineteenth and Enson right across Macosco and realized a lot of activity. There is no uh marketing materials on the web because again, we did not want to get over our skis, represent, um, misquote and uh certainly understand what the mission, objective with the county was behalf of the uh, uh, the property owners, if you will, the county. was behalf of the, the property owners, if you will, the county. So significant activity, local developers, I would say. We don't have the focus and rollout to the regional folks and players in the development world. However, the owner-user folks have come forth, three, five, seven acres. We've seen good activity in the building materials, construction industry, telecom world, food and beverage, and some starting reach out on the e-commerce distribution market, if you will. So I think the job creation clusters in one of Monica's slides is spot on. Zoning wise, this affords a broad breadth use at the end of the day for industry. At, if we think about job creating lands within the county, city, there is very few remaining industrial parcels, certainly as high as you suggested with the in-place infrastructure, main and main location within the county. So we're excited about the opportunity. We believe, you know, over 450 jobs, over 400,000 square feet. The economic benefits on the income, the job creation, the multipliers are significant.
Lost you there, Brad.
So yes, but we're early days on activity. We don't want to misrepresent, we don't want to get our, I'm sorry, can you hear me okay?
Can now.
Can the group hear me? Uh, okay, very good. I think it's important to get our messaging. I think it's important to put our package together holistically out to the market. I'm certainly here today to be a proponent on additional study and potentially additional investment, given some of those economic drivers and metrics. I think my vote would be to focus on option one as one parcel. Site plan Brent and McKenzie put together is broad reaching, adaptable to the various industry types. And I think the costs focused on one parcel are going to outweigh multiple parcels if we focus on option one within the package.
Commissioner Thompson has a question, Brad.
Thank you, sir. So Brad, you gave everyone else credit. I'm pretty sure you had a starring role in this play. So thanks for your part in it. I appreciate that we are going to be well-prepared to move forward in a coherent fashion. I would be interested when we look at the use of this option, whichever option, and I agree with you, option one is a good one, that we look at the use of water resources. We've already seen some proposals that are high water users and are high electricity users. So I'd like us as a county board of commissioners to have the information to do those considerations as well when we look at what's sustainable long-term. Cause I think that's a significant feature that we'd do well to consider now rather than later.
If I may be able to expand upon those investments. I believe it's quite challenging in this climate where developers are very active, focusing on low-hanging fruit, if you will. To the point, this property has some challenges. It's been out there for quite some time. Two years plus cycle is quite onerous for a developer. Versus if we come to the table with a number of these answers and some actual dollars and resources and say, we want to enter into a public-private partnership. And I would certainly offer that state, federal, city, county are those stakeholders in that public partnership. You're going to realize a significant broader level of interest, probably enhanced timeframes from due diligence entitlements and getting to the market would be my, would be my recommendations and thoughts. Let me also expand upon price points too. I think that's, to your question, a very critical component to this conversation. The market comps, again, are quite limited. There's very few industrial parcels ready to develop with the infrastructure, mitigated wetlands, zoning, et cetera. Dolphin Street to our south is one. Northwest Natural Gas acquired a five-plus acre parcel from the Ny Guards at approximately 550 a square foot. No wetlands to my knowledge. I don't have in-depth knowledge as to the onsite costs, but my guess is it's a couple of dollars a square foot. So I would benchmark the price in the market of five to $7 a square foot for these parcels, depending on size, configuration and site costs. So rolling back to Monica and the team's work of site costs, we have five, six, seven dollars a square foot we're staring in the, in the face. So it's quite onerous to a developer, a user, et cetera, without answering some of these questions and bringing additional resources to this conversation, to this project. However, there is no better site, location, existing infrastructure, the floodplain, perfectly zoned, et cetera. So the market is very active in my 28 years for industrial properties across the state, every city, every county, et cetera. Limited supply, huge demand at all-time record pricing. And so I think you're in a good position to take that risk on, to enhance this conversation in this climate we're currently in. And again, at the end of the day, you have to serve the community. Telecom, materials, services, you name it, everything related to industrial, to serve the community for the next 25, 50 years. And you have very few remaining land parcels to accommodate, to create those family wage jobs. So it's a very compelling conversation to move the ball down the road. Who and how it gets done, I'll, I'll pass the torch on that conversation. But it's a worthy conversation in this climate. It's a great time in the marketplace. And I would also pose a question to Stephanie. It sounds like we are studying additional off-site wetland mitigation bank opportunities. And I would ask the hard question with our parcel at one of the highest points in the county, how are we looking for other off-site wetland mitigation banks in lower-lying properties?
Um, well, ELS is working with an outside company. I'm not, I've signed like a non-disclosure agreement or so. So I'm not sure how much I can actually discuss. But we're actively looking, contacting landowners and seeing what opportunities are out there to establish a mitigation bank, another one. I've spoken to Department of State Lands about it and they're excited because they feel the Warrenton area definitely needs another bank because of the development activity. But at, at this point, we, it's still very preliminary. And then anybody who's familiar with the banking process knows it, it's a lot of upfront costs and a lot of time to finally get the, the bank realized. So it's probably a two-year process in itself.
Very good. Along those lines, I'm wondering back to our, our north coast, if a phased development couldn't be discussed with the stakeholders and Team McKenzie and so on, where the 30 acres, option one, phase one, and then we're moving to the north, phase two, if you will, with additional wetland bank opportunities offsite.
And was that a question for me? I, I missed a part of it, but it was, you were talking about a phased approach?
Correct.
Okay, and I think that would work fairly well. But when it comes to the permitting of the wetland fill, the agencies want to see all phases upfront. And we experienced that with the school district where they, you know, they're only building the two, or the elementary and the middle school. And then the high school is five years down the road, but we still had to show all the development on the plan, including stormwater. With, you know, the caveat that it might change, but they still want to see the full phased plan at the beginning.
And I would just add to that, the county in prior master plans that we have tried to develop in, and then in addition to the most recent offer that the county had on this property, that was a barrier because they were trying to take a phased approach. And it couldn't, it wouldn't move forward because of that.
Any other questions? Well, I just would say that, I mean, we've got a really good team assembled here with McKenzie and Christian Wakefield and Ecological Land Services. I'm, I'm really pleased with this discussion and it's exciting. Commissioner Banks has a question.
As we dig deeper into these graphs and tables and our packet, Monica, should we send all questions that we have to you? What is our process? Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Commissioner Webb?
Well, um, for those who have been listening to me rail against this north coast business park as one of the least admirable actions of former boards. I, I think that for the first time, I have some hope. It's like we have a lot of smart people on our screen. And this is the first time I've ever thought we could maybe pull this off with the advice of, of some creative people. So, um, you know, I, this is, this is, as far as I'm concerned, never should have been bought and never should have ever been called a business park. And, uh, but I, but I, it looks to me like if we're careful about being very strategic about the, the investments that we've all known we had to somehow make to make these, these at all attractive industrial sites. I, I, I think this team maybe can do it. And so I, I'd like a considerable more information about, about the infrastructure costs. The, the city of Warrenton has become very aggressive in getting, getting developer fees for, for improvements. And, um, you know, so we're likely to have to really play nice with the city. And I think getting perhaps some Business Oregon type of money, and especially for the infrastructure bill that is slowly moving through Congress. I, I, I think maybe we could actually do it. So hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb.
I see County Manager Boone.
Chair for the members of the board. I know that this is a lot of information. And so what, certainly if you have questions, if you can send them to, to Monica, that would be great. But I just wanted to also let you know that staff is happy to sit down with you and walk through this in more detail, if you would like. And maybe some of those questions would come easier out of, out of that process. So I just want to let you know that we are here for you. And so if you'd like to sit down and go over it in more detail, that would be great also. Just let us know.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. Brad?
If I can, if I can just close and just emphasize again, as I've talked to Monica and team, you know, the experience, my experience as an industrial broker around the metro area, a number of ports have jumped into the industrial lands development business in a big way as an expansion to their portfolios to, you know, enhance their services, resources and job creation to strong benefits, economic results and benefits. And it just feels like now is a perfect time with some of the infrastructure conversation in Congress, down in the state, cities, et cetera, that putting a committee together with all the stakeholders, including the Port of Astoria, city, Business Oregon, et cetera, with the economic drivers. And certainly I think we can expand upon those a bit with Eco Northwest or the help from others. You, you'll, you'll, you'll have a consensus. You'll have everyone raising their hand saying this is critical to, you're one of the fastest-growing counties in the state. This is critical to our five, 10-year strategic plan for job creation, enhancement, et cetera, servicing the community. So I, I really believe Monica and her team have done great work, but I think now it's time to get a regional committee put together to advance this important site. And at the end of the day, I'd be hopeful that we could, we could develop and produce more than 30 acres out of the 140 would be my hope.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you, Brad. I completely agree with that. And to Commissioner Webb's point, I mean, there are a lot of smart people and this, myself excluded from that discussion. But I do think that there was a good comment as well about former commissions and dealing with this piece of property. You know, things have changed quite a bit after, over the last few years with regards to wetlands and some of the constraints on that property. It's much, a much bigger barrier now than it used to be. But, and I do think that the city of Warrenton certainly would like to see something happen here as well. I think that they'll be very cooperative because they've been, they've been anxious to see development in, in Warrenton at the North Coast Business Park as well. So I think they will be a very good partner. Commissioner Thompson?
You know, I always, thank you, Mr. Chair, and you're too modest, by the way. I always want to hear about the transportation options because manufacturing jobs, as we know from looking at the employment data, create the highest sustainable wage. But when we look at manufacturing, how do we get the raw materials in? How do we get the finished product out? So I hope, I mean, how do we get it to the river? We don't have a railroad trucking, you know, there are intermodal facilities. How do we deal with that part as well? I just want that part of the action. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Well, this was a good discussion. More to come. Thank you very much. We'll move on. We've got two more items on the agenda. I got a hard stop at 12, so we've got to move on here to the planning commission applications. Myrna Patrick, replacement on page 174.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. We have a seven-member planning commission. Earlier at the beginning of this year, we had two resignations. And the board has filled one of those vacancies with Carrie Johnson, who replaced Bruce Francis on April 14th. And we have five applications this morning that have, are, have been submitted to replace Myrna Francis. That includes Jennifer Johnston, Brian Pogue, Tad Peterson, Mike Magyar, and Jennifer Rasmussen. So right now, the planning commission does not have any scheduled meetings until July 20th, which is when we have our joint meeting scheduled with the planning commission and the board here. And in the meantime, staff has been working with county council and county manager's office to review the planning commission bylaws, to compile new training materials and to prepare that agenda for our July 20th joint meeting. As Commissioner Thompson pointed out earlier during this meeting, we are adapting our processes as we move forward and receive additional information and input. And so one of the items that we had not scheduled in and presented to the board yet is that statement that we talked about with the roles and responsibilities for the planning commission members. And so right now, you are on track to approve our planning work plan and appoint your seventh planning commissioner on June 9th. But what staff would suggest, if the board is open to this and in agreement, Uh, but what staff would uh suggest, if the board is open to this and in agreement, is that we move our appointment of that seventh member for the planning commission to June twenty-third, and in the meantime, on June ninth, bring back a draft statement of roles and responsibilities for the board to review. Uh, and then that way, uh, after June ninth, if everyone's in agreement, we can send that out to the applicants, to the planning commission members, and have that uh in place before your uh July twentieth meeting. Uh, so that is my condensed presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Commissioner Banks?
Just a comment, thank you. I love how we put the horse and the cart in the correct order. I really appreciate your efforts, Gail. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thumbs up? Okay, so we'll come back with this on June twenty-third, you said?
Right, we will have the uh draft statement on June twenty, or blast, yes, June twenty-third, planning commission appointments. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask just a really dumb question as far as residency of where these uh current planning commissioners are located and the ones that have applied? Do we have any rule of thumb that of of representation amongst the districts? What's preferable? It would seem that you'd want to have uh, I mean, a planning commissioner from each district, if possible.
Right, so uh we allow, under our bylaws, up to two planning commission members from the incorporated areas, and then we try to appoint or if we can recruit candidates from each of the um six planning areas that are throughout the county. Uh, some, some of the planning areas are a little bit more difficult to recruit from because they're just not densely populated.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, there isn't just a rule of thumb, there is in fact a a standard that we can have only two, as I recall. Uh, correct me, Director Henrickson, if I'm incorrect about who lives in cities. We can have two city members and everybody? So um, I didn't see that in the material that I got in terms of Chris Farrar lives in Astoria, so he's a city person, right? Incorporated?
Right, he and John Orr are both uh incorporated residents.
So there is no room for anyone else to be appointed to the planning commission other than an unincorporated, a resident of unincorporated pla- class of, do, do all of the people uh that you forwarded to us meet that standard?
Yes, all five of them are uh in the unincorporated area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Banks.
And just to clarify, um, was Myrna within my district?
Yes, she was.
Okay, so, okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Gail.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll move on to the next item, which is the appointment to ambulance service area advisory committee um on page one ninety-one. Uh, Tiffany Brown, our emergency manager is here. I'll turn it over to Tiffany.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. I'm supervising the call center this week, so Tom Bennett was kind enough to let me squeeze in next to him here at the desk. I have in front of you to consider today a new appointment to the ambulance service area advisory committee. Uh, this is the physician position, uh physician advisor position. To be clear, we have two physician positions on the committee. One is Dr. Duncan, our county health officer, and the second is the physician advisor, which is the medical officer affiliated with medics. That person is currently Shannon Berry, and Shannon has submitted an application to be part of the committee. She comes to us well-qualified, having served a similar role in the TVFNR, Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue, uh, where she came before. She's always an, she's also an emergency room uh doctor for the Providence Health System. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? I'm not seeing any questions. Looks good. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you. Have a great day.
And so this will come back to us at the uh meeting next week, or?
Oh, sorry. Uh, you'll be uh making a motion and a decision on this at the May twenty-sixth meeting. Thank you.
May twenty-sixth, perfect. All right. Thank you very much, Tiffany. Man, we don't have any other items on the agenda. Anything for the good of the order? Well, thank you very much, everybody. We will see you soon. Take care, have a good rest of your day.